Excellent, so I hereby open the regular session of the planning commission. Sandy, could we get our roll call?
Chair Salazar. Vice Chair Bergen, here. Commissioner Quabula. Commissioner Gill. Commissioner Buck.
President.
Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Schmuck.
Here.
Do we have any adjustments to the agenda then? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Commissioner Bergen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we'll move on to the approval of the minutes for October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, and December sixth, twenty twenty-two. Are there any corrections to the minutes as published in the packet?
Yes, I had some corrections, but I didn't bring exactly which, page ten of the whole packet and then page, I believe, three. So page three was a word in there that didn't, wasn't part of the presentation. Commissioner Buck had mentioned what phrase he used, want to use it properly. Hispanic, I believe he said, and so the word.
Instead of Latinx.
Yes, okay, so and I thought that word should be struck and then the other two were spelling errors, yeah. So, picky, as I presented, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And you have those.
I have them, he sent me an email.
Okay, excellent. Any other corrections? All right, hearing none, we will approve the minutes with the corrections noted by Commissioner Schmuck. Do we need a motion? Can they just be?
You do not need a motion to approve the minutes, you can approve them by consensus. If there are disagreements about the correction, you could go through the motion process.
Any disagreements about the correction mentioned by Commissioner Schmuck?
Nope.
We will move to approve those minutes. Thank you, thank you, Christina. All right, and we will now move to business from the audience. This is the time in our agenda for the public to provide testimony on any topic relevant to the planning mission. It's like we don't have anybody here to speak, anyone online would like to raise their hand? All right, and just in case anyone does want to to provide business from the audience and you are joining online, you are free to raise your hand, otherwise keep yourself on mute. And if you would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature on Zoom or press star nine if joining by phone. So seeing no one with anyone with any business from the audience, we'll now move on to the next item, which are reports from city council meetings. So first up is January third meeting, I believe, of Commissioner Schmuck.
Yes, so there was, were three sessions, if you will, regular session, city attorney Mary Bridget Smith administered the oath of office to the newly elected counselors and the mayor Sean Van Gordon, Michelle Weber is Counselor Ward One and Victoria Doyle is Counselor Ward Five. And then there was a work session following that, a presentation by the, by El Rapa, executive director of Lane Regional Air Protection Agency gave the council presentation. The federal agencies set clear clean air standards for release of pollutants. El Rapa is responsible for implementing the Clean Air Act in Lane County. El Rapa monitors air quality standards and toxins and implements standards and programs and to improve the air quality. El Rapa maintains about eight monitoring sites. One toxics, I believe, was correct and they're trying to add another toxic site, but don't absolutely quote me on that. The agency partners with local cities and Lane County manage, they, El Rapa manages the compliance and permitting and site inspections. About forty Springfield businesses are permitted through El Rapa and looks to Springfield to help maintain its effort, maintenance of effort. Recent upgrades to the website that result residents requesting more resulted from residents requesting more intuitive interface and access to more details. He's encouraged folks to look at the El Rapa website, understanding done quite a significant change to it. Counselors ask that particular monitored and compliance, asked about a particular matter and the compliance effort. El Rapa has more options with permitted sites than with the property owners and non-permitted businesses, but they do try to work closely with them. And then for the council meeting itself, the council approved the consent calendar and and discuss committee assignments that you can find those in the minutes there who's interfacing with the various committees. And then Council Pictionary was elected to the new, to be the new council president. Thank you.
All right, excellent. Thank you, Commissioner Schmuck. Next up, January ninth meeting, do you have a report, Commissioner Bergen?
I do. Okay, so the first portion of the meeting was the SEDA meeting and Ally Camp was recommended by city manager to be the staff liaison and approved by the committee. And the big point of conversation was the Blue McKenzie project. I had never heard of it before and I'm sure, I feel like I maybe was living under a rock because I'm sure a lot of you have heard of it. But it is situated between the old U F building and the post office. And Ally Camp had mentioned this is going to be like a legacy project. The groundbreaking, excuse me, will be in March is what she had projected and it'll be eighty-four units of market rate housing and then commercial on the bottom, so it'll be mixed use. And we've been talking about this for quite a while, but the mass timber construction, cross limited timber will be used in the construction of that, so it'll be really great. My question was, when we're talking market rate housing, are these apartments or are these condos? Do either of you know?
I believe they're apartments.
Apartments, okay.
That's correct.
They are, okay, thank you so much.
But you can, I mean, they could be condoized later, but it's difficult to do that under Oregon condo law and the city doesn't play a direct role in whether they're they're con, condominiums later on.
Thank you. And that was a ten million dollar construction loan through SEDA. Some of the pieces I thought were interesting was that SEDA's investment will sit silently until the sale of the property. And then the, the city is the third priority on the lane, so once it does sell, there's a couple of other parties that'll be paid off first. The downtown, the next topic was downtown lighting installation, phases three and four, that was approved. And from my gathering of that, it's near Paramount Shopping Center, my first in Maine. And then the next piece was authorizing deadness for capital projects up to thirteen point one million dollars and that does include the ten million for the Blue McKenzie project. And then the, that wrapped up the SEDA meeting and the city council work session was their twenty twenty-three council retreat. And they reviewed the twenty twenty-two council priorities and then I was cut off at the end of that. But overall, I felt like it was a really great presentation and was really excited to, excited to see the, the groundbreaking of the Blue McKenzie project. I think that'll be really awesome and revitalize that area a little bit.
Oh, you had mentioned two phases of the downtown lighting, so the other phase is right around Blue McKenzie on A Street.
Oh, okay, that's great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that report, Commissioner Bergen, and yeah, for the additional information, Sandy. All right, and then there was another meeting just yesterday on Tuesday because of the holiday on Monday. So we will wait until our next meeting for a report from Commissioner Buck, Buck, so that you can have that, some time to prepare your notes as well, so. Excellent. And moving on to the next or item of business is our main item for this meeting is selecting our commission officers and committee liaisons. There were a couple vacancies opened up midway through the year, so for context, I was serving the vice chair role at the beginning of the year and then Commissioner Landon left about midway through the year and I was jumped into the chair role and then Commissioner Bergen was elected to be vice chair in, in my place. So neither of us served a full term, but I just wanted to give that context as well. So, and that, we will move on to the first office position, which is the positions for chair. So do we have any nominations for the office of chair? Trevor?
I would like to nominate Chair Salazar. The Commissioner Salazar.
I would second that.
Commissioner Buck, thank you for your nominations. I will accept the nomination. Any others who would like to nominate anyone else? I guess I will close the nominations. And if there's no further discussion on the nominees, or if, if anyone would like to speak to the nominees.
Well, I've been here only a short bit, but you've done outstanding job of sort of keeping us in line and keeping, letting everybody have an opportunity, so.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you, Commissioner Schmuck. I love a good meeting.
And if I may, thank you, I would love for you to be able to have the full opportunity to serve at least a full year. And I think that, like, we've said, you've done a great job, so I think it's only right or fair for you to be able to continue serving.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that, and it's been an honor to serve as the, the chair for the last half year and look forward to a, a new term and a full term. All right, so pending a vote, though, so if there's no further discussion on the nominees, then I will call for a vote. And, oh, we do not need to hold a vote if there's only one, one person who's been nominated, so. Then in that case, if there are no other nominations, then I will declare myself elected by consensus. All right, and next we have the role of vice chair. Do we have any nominations for the office of vice chair?
I'll nominate Commissioner Bergen.
I'd like to second that nomination as well. I think you've been doing a great job in, in your role as well, and I think you also have earned a shot at a full year.
Thank you.
Any other nominations or discussions?
I, I, I wholeheartedly agree with that. I think the two of you have done a great job and I'd like to see a full term for Commissioner Bergen as well.
All right, hearing no other discussion or nominations, then we will consider Commissioner Bergen elected as vice chair by consensus as well. Congratulations. All right, next up is the position of council liaison. Commissioner Buck, I'm not sure if you would like to speak a little bit, you've been serving in this role this past year. I don't know if you wanted to say anything about kind of what that entail, what the position entails.
You know, the, the position really entails just kind of passing on kind of important points that we want to bring to the council's attention. If there's certain areas, certain topics that we've discussed that we feel the discussion was really relevant and that we want to make sure the council's aware of, bringing those to the, the council liaison or the, the council counterpart, the commission liaison, it has really been the role. It hasn't come up too terribly often. There were a couple of things that I made sure to point out to Counselor Pitts, but that's really the, that's really the, the most important piece. As we get into more lengthy topics, especially, especially more complex topics, bringing those, those issues to council's attention are important. The one that stands out was, was some of the deliberation that we had around the Main Street Safety Project. You know, I, I did make sure Counselor Pitts was aware that there was, there was a lot that went into that deliberation and, and there were some important points to, to consider there. But that's, that's really what it boils down to is making sure that they have all the information, because sometimes just our minutes or, or the report isn't, doesn't always reflect everything that goes into our deliberation.
Excellent, thank you for that quick summary of the position. All right, I will now accept, I will now accept nominations for the office of council liaison.
Trying to nominate, we don't know if someone wants to do it.
You can also self-nominate.
So, clarify, so I, the committee list, you two were listed as the city liaisons to the commission, is that right?
We're staff.
Okay, I guess I looked at the wrong call. I didn't see who, which counselor is, is one of the counselors have responsibility for or interface with the planning commission?
Counselor Doyle. Counselor Doyle is the planning, is the planning commission liaison for the city council.
Okay, yeah, thank you, okay.
Yeah, it's formerly, I'm sorry, Pitts, now.
Right.
Well, I'm happy to, I'm happy to do it. I'm not sure what's going to come up, Sandy wouldn't make a word I'm aware of.
Well, you know, Commissioner Schmuck, I, I would support your, I would support your nomination. I think that in the next year, what will come up is there's going to be lots of things that come up around Glenwood. I would, I would anticipate the Main Street Safety Project will come back to us and I'm, wouldn't rule out the possibility of some more issues around middle income housing. And so that all of those things are, are high points of community interest and our role is to provide the council with as much information to make an informed decision as possible, so. I would anticipate that those are topics that you'll be communicating with Counselor Doyle about and talking to her about what all went into that, because if she's not able to see our meeting, the finer points of what we discussed and what went into it and, and, and more importantly, what the community feedback we got was, those things are definitely important things that I would anticipate coming up, if that, if that helps at all.
So, so, so they, to make sure they're higher level thing, or important things that make sure it gets in front of them. Obviously, everything's important, but those things that you think they may want to know more immediately, that type of thing?
Yeah, so sometimes an example for me is helpful and so an example is going back to the Main Street Safety Project. You know, one of the things that business owners brought up was the, the impact that the traffic plan was going to have on, on their ability to get trucks in and out. You know, parking and those kinds of things. And so those things got brought up by community members during our meeting and while they're in the minutes, just being able to highlight that and bring that to their attention that this is really how the community feels about this and this is what they expressed. So just to make sure they're aware of those things, because sometimes it's, it's, you don't catch all of that stuff by just reading them. And so our job is to make sure that they're aware of those things.
Also especially helpful for the council to know kind of where we fell in our deliberations, like if something, if we came to a, a pretty easy unanimous decision, that's helpful for them to know, even if it is a kind of controversial or heated topic or something, if we, that's helpful information for the council to know if we came to a unanimous, unanimous decision pretty easily saying, we were all pretty much on the same page with this, just so you know, or if there's kind of divided opinion in our deliberations when we come to a decision, that's helpful for the council to know as well.
Both sides to the council, okay, okay. You know, if anybody else is, wants to do that, I'm, I'm happy to, to, to do it.
I just want to jump in real quick and make sure there are rules about communicating with the counselors that they're making a decision in a quasi judicial land use decision, so I just want to flag that it won't be every planning commission topic that the council liaison will liaise directly with the council on, because there are certain decisions that they're sort of a cone of silence around the, the, in, for quasi judicial decisions that can appeal, the record has to speak for itself rather than individual planning commissioner speaking with individual counselors, that creates procedural problems. So just wanted to throw that out there as my really quick caveat, especially if we have new planning commissioners, to just always be keeping that in mind. The Main Street Safety Project, middle housing, those are all legislative decisions that are policy, broad community concerns, those are all completely appropriate to talk with the council about, but a controversial site specific zone change that gets appealed to the city council would not be, so. It's my opportunity for your bi-monthly plug on quasi judicial meeting rules. We haven't had any of those hearings in a while.
I would second the nomination for Commissioner Schmuck.
Other nominations or discussion?
I would speak in favor of the nomination. Been here just a short time, but you seem to be very well read on a lot of the topics and that tells me that you're going to go to the council with all of the information, which I really appreciate. We don't have to worry if you read it or not, which makes me feel good of you being the council liaison.
Appreciate that. Trying to make sure that's true.
Pressure.
All right, well, hearing no other nominations or discussion, Commissioner Schmuck will be will be not what is now the council liaison by consensus. Congratulations. All right, and next up is Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee Liaison, otherwise known as the BPAC liaison. Any nominations?
I want to nominate myself for this position, but I'm most familiar with the work on the Community Development Advisory Committee, as I was previously on it, so I don't know if there'd be a
Conflict.
There you go, conflict, but I guess that's what I was, I want to nominate myself for, but I'm happy to do the pedestrian advisory as well, so.
May I add an input really quickly? I see that Commissioner Quabula was on both, just for clarity. But, and I, forgive me if I'm overstepping, but we, we do have two more potential, not potential, two more commissioners coming on in the future. So if it wasn't something your heart was after, we could reassess in a couple meetings to see if we wanted, we've all had time to think about it and say, uh, maybe. Just don't feel like you have, we have to fill.
Yeah, we don't have to.
So bold versus one.
Yeah, yeah.
Not to say you couldn't do it, because it's been done.
I guess I will. My own favor, I guess. I'm going when it comes up. The next line, I will nominate myself for the CD AC.
Okay. All right, so hearing no formal nominations yet for the BPAC Committee Liaison, are we in agreement that we'd like to hold that, filling that position until so the new commissioners will be joining us in March, right, or it will be?
I hope so.
Yeah, hopefully, hopefully, we get some good applicants and, and both positions are able to build in March, so. Are we okay holding off two months until?
I can make a second, no, sorry, I wasn't very clear with that. I, I can do both, maybe in the intermediary and then maybe when, if that's an okay option, then maybe when we, we come around to the new commissioners being appointed, we can talk about rebalancing the workloads.
How often does the, the BPAC meet, Sandy?
Sure, the BPAC meets every other month and then they have two subcommittees and those subcommittees meet in the, in between months.
Okay, so we wouldn't necessarily need an interim person in that role if it was only a matter of between now and March.
Yeah, I think that's up to you, whether you want to have somebody interim. Somebody may not want to jump onto two committees immediately, so, or they might be ready to go, depending on who, who those people are.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I, I guess, and I, I will, I will say that I, I would do it. I, I mean, it's, it's not a committee that, that jumps out to me as, as having high, high interest in something I'd be super excited about necessarily, but I'm, I'm certainly open to learning more about it and, and, and doing it if, if that would be of help.
I think it is, in, in my opinion, it is helpful for all of us as, during our time on the commission to kind of rotate through roles, get to know how different work and be able to get engaged with them. I think that informs us as, as a commission as we move through our role and, and move through our terms and make informed decisions when we, when those are asked of us, so. Just in general, I would recommend that we all kind of try to move through roles on an annual basis, if that helps with your.
Yeah, no, well, I mean, you know, that's, that, that's, that's a very compelling point. I, I guess I, I would be, I'd be, I'd be happy to to take on the BPAC if, if, if that would be helpful.
All right, well, I'm willing to nominate you, so I nominate, actually, Commissioner Buck. Any other nominations or discussion? Right, in that case, we will consider Commissioner Buck as elected by consensus to the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee Liaison role. Congratulations. All right, and then finally, the Community Development Advisory Committee Liaison, otherwise known as CDAC liaison, and we've already heard some, some interest from Commissioner Thompson. Any formal nominations?
I'll nominate Mr. Thompson.
Second.
Any other nominations or discussion?
I appreciate that you've had some history with that and some knowledge and expertise. I know that's a very busy meeting, so I appreciate that you're willing to continue on. You must have liked it before, so we appreciate that.
Think of a meeting next week. Ever soon.
They were doing really exciting projects and it was really kind of that, I mean, it gave me the momentum to apply for the planning commission, so that's really why I'm here, but I can't remember her name, she was great to work with. So they've done a lot of really cool work and so I'm happy to, happy to be there.
Well, yeah, I think I would just echo Commissioner Bergen's comments of that, I think it is really helpful that you've had experience on that committee. And yeah, thank you for the work that you've done already on that committee and, and the projects that the committee's been able to move forward, so that's excellent. All right, any other nominations or discussion? And hearing none, we will consider you elected by consensus, Commissioner Thompson, to the role of Community Development Advisory Committee Liaison. Congratulations. All right, so we currently also have one inactive committee, which is the Government Committee for Development Code Update, Governance Committee for Development Code Update. I wonder if you could give a little context, Sandy, about what the committee does and why it is currently inactive?
So, we started our development code update project probably five years ago. And this was a council priority directing staff to make changes to the code, to make it please, to make a more cohesive code since it had been amended over time kind of piecemeal, so to look at it as a whole code, how can we make changes and streamline, simplify, clarify the project guide. Well, as we were, it was envisioned as three phases, residential for the first phase, employment uses for the second phase, and then the everything else phase. The legislature then passed the middle housing legislation and we decided we And we decided we would keep moving because we thought that the changes that we'd identified were in compliance with the legislation. But that was followed by rulemaking and the rules were such that we weren't in compliance, so. It kind of delayed our whole project, but we ended up doing. Phase two and three, I mean, phase one and two simultaneously for the adoption process because the residential had been delayed. So we've done the first two phases, the third phase. Now, it still needs to be done, except we have another mandate, which is much more encompassing. And much more work, and that's the climate friendly equitable communities rulemaking. And so with those mandates and very quick timelines, we do not have staff capacity. To take on that third phase of the code update. So the governance committee was formed as a way to. Because this was a council priority and it was pretty complex, to be able to pull two members of the city council. And two members of the planning commission together onto one committee that staff could go to for guidance. And if we had questions about, you know, how should we handle this? Or how do we incorporate middle housing, for example, the legislation, how do we deal with that in? On the rulemaking process, I mean, in the code writing process, so that committee met. As needed, but maybe four times a year on average. To guide staff. As we did that work, we also, in addition to, had a stakeholder advisory committee. You know, as a citizen group and we had internal committees, but this was kind of from the elected and appointed official perspective to give us guidance. So the reason it's on pause is because we're kind of not doing that project anymore now because of the staff capacity. But should we be able to revive it, council did appoint. Members to it, they maintained the mayor and. Counselor Mo are on that committee. So you could, if you wanted to, do the same thing and appoint members knowing that it's at this time in inactive committee. Or you could wait until it becomes active and then decide.
Thanks for that, that context, Sandy. In my opinion, hearing that, I think just knowing that the council has two members just kind of pointed to. Be on deck, as it were, maybe it would, it would be appropriate for us to appoint two members as well to. Be able to meet them and and with them.
Well, if if Commissioner Bergen is willing, she's been on it and also been here through. A fair chunk of that development process, which I think would be helpful for at least one person who has that. Background and done a couple of phases, I think that would be, and she did a great job on that, was responsive and showed up and. I think really considered the ramifications of the process and the goals, so I think. I think that that would be a useful thing, but you're also vice chair, so.
Thank you, and I would be honored to continue serving in that capacity.
I was just gonna say that, you know, if we're gonna gain a couple of new members. And that committee is in hiatus, we might just wait and for maybe some other interests, some not to discount, you know. What Commissioner Gill said.
Yeah, in my opinion, I think we could appoint, if if you have interest, Commissioner Bergen, we could. Nominate you for and appoint you to that position and then leave one of the the. Positions open as we discussed for the the BPAC. Just to see if there's any interest in the two other commissioners, then we can, once they're able to join us. Could discuss who would be best to fill that final role. And it's, we're not, there's no time crunch that we need to fill this by, so we can be a little.
I'd be happy to serve on that. And I and and understand the thought process that you're bringing to the table about offering it up. I have really, when we did meet, oh, right, camera's over here. I really enjoyed the work when we did meet and I felt like we did make some. Good recommendations to staff and I think to be able to have that. Not to say I have institutional knowledge, but to bring that forward, I think, I appreciate those comments, so thank you for that.
Right, well, I think we can at least have a nomination for for one of the positions and see if, see if there's interest in the second. So do we have a nomination for the office of. For one position on the Governments Committee for Development Code Update?
Pardon me, I I nominate. Commissioner Bergen for the for the position.
Other nominations or discussion? Hearing none, Commissioner Bergen, congratulations, you are elected by consensus. And any other nominations for the second position? Hearing none, I think we can leave that open until we have the two new commissioners joining us hopefully in March. Otherwise, you'll be our lone representative if council needs you in the next. Excellent, well, that.
Commissioner Salazar, just a quick comment. I I'm I'm absolutely in favor of waiting for to to see who our new new commissioners are and. And and see if there's interest there. If if not. I would, I would love to discuss further the possibility of being serving with Commissioner Bergen on that. That committee, but at this time, I I just want to put it out there that I have some interest, but at this time. I I think I'd like to see how that plays out with the new commissioners first.
Okay, excellent, well, yeah, I hope you maintain that interest in the coming months and, yeah, look forward to hearing a potential nomination in March. Excellent, and especially if we're not able to fill both positions on the commission, but hopefully we will. All right, excellent, well, that covers all of our offices and liaisons, thanks everyone. Next item of business is a really fun one, it's really having a formal time to have appreciation for our two outgoing commissioners. Commissioner Quabula and who unfortunately couldn't join us today, but also especially Commissioner Gill, who's here with us and. Both put in a lot of service, two term, two full terms each, oh, one, one term. But a great term nonetheless, and yeah, I've certainly appreciated personally just. In our deliberations and in our discussions, you always bring a fresh perspective and especially if we. Have kind of gotten into a a group thinky sort of a place in our discussions. You're usually the one to kind of dislodge us from that and offer a fresh question to get us thinking differently. And I've just always appreciated your perspective, so thank you.
If I may, yes, I would like to also speak to that since I've served for so long. I think you joined shortly after, a few months after I did, I've always really appreciated your tenacity and. The conversation that you bring, you've educated me on a lot of things that I didn't know, I didn't know before. And I think that I'm a better planning commissioner because you've served, so thank you.
Anyone else feel free to to share? Any appreciations?
Well, I'll just say that I I kind of got the same vibe from the short time we've been here, just very thoughtful. Input and you know, it's helped me in a couple instances, appreciate that.
I as well was very, didn't get to work with you very well, very much, but I appreciate it, I think, several moments, several different times you spoke about your equity concerns. And stuff like that, so I find it really inspiring, thank you.
I've I I really appreciated your. Your way of of kind of conceptualizing a problem with looking at the priorities. And and considering, you know, all the different aspects and 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 really with with a mind of. What's best for our community, you know, not just what makes sense now, what's convenient. But what really speaks to who the community is and and what what our decisions are really speaking to and certain. And so I've really, I really appreciated that. And and the thing that kind of stands out specifically is I I remember during particularly. You know, a good deliberation around the Main Street safety when we're kind of discussing a couple of things. It was you that kind of called out, look, what we're, what we're talking about is. Is trying to fix a problem that the larger problem is 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 not on the table here. And we need to recognize that, and we need to recognize there's a, there's a solution that needs to be got looked at beyond just this. And yet, this is what we have to do, this is what we have to work on today and work with today, and I really appreciated that perspective. In in conceptualizing that.
Thank you. I have, I have learned so much from everybody on here, I am Commissioner Quabula too. And I've just been super impressed at the broad. Perspective, like everybody who's on here brings something different and. That's really great to see because there have been times in the past where it did not feel like on some of the. On some of the city commissions that there is that, and I just think it's. It makes for better results in the end when we can all speak. And I feel like the. Perspectives, well, the chairmanship has been really great. And I think like you mentioned earlier with Commissioner or with Chair Salazar. I think we all feel like we can speak and we are invited to speak, so that invitation, I think, is really important and I think. I've seen that with other chairs and you are particularly carrying that on, I very much appreciate that and. Yeah, Commissioner Bergen, I was grateful when you were in the room when I showed up, for sure. It's a, it's a very different role in planning commission than the historic mission which I served on, which is. Certainly less formal. And less recognized. And where decisions from this body go. You know, straight to recommendations to city council is is an important thing, so. I do, I appreciate, I appreciate everybody's effort and I I sort of expected to. Have people who weren't showing up prepared and that rarely happened, so so it's been a good, it's been a good run, I appreciate it. And staff, you blow my mind, this city. I I just kind of want to tell everybody I see in the community every day how amazing this staff is and. Christina, you are, I don't even know, you have a book in your brain and you can process stuff, it's just. I just can't even with you and like really having a nice sense of. When, like giving commissioners space to. Ask and talk and sort of pay attention and know when to step in. And also when to let us figure it out. Is really awesome and yeah, Steph, you blow me away, totally blew me away.
I'll just jump in real quick, thank you very much, Commissioner Gill, that was very kind, I think we have all really enjoyed working with you. And with Commissioner Quabula, in case he watches this later, I also want to say I've learned a lot personally. About how to better prepare to be ready to answer questions from the commission, from you and from Commissioner Quabula, and you both have a tendency to ask. Questions that drive right to a really good. I think just really good questions and to perceive legal nuances that are just interesting for me to answer. So and I really just feel like it's an incredible privilege to serve this commission and I am so grateful as a citizen of Springfield and. As staff to have people like you and Commissioner Quabula and everybody that's, you know, in there who volunteer your time. I get paid to come to these meetings, but you do not, and I just, you know, I think on behalf of. All the staff and the citizens, like your work is really valuable. And the time you take to prepare for these meetings and to show up and ask questions and. Even if I tell you, sorry, that's not in line with Oregon land, you saw. It it's real, it's valuable that you show up and you ask those questions about what can we and can't we do and. It's a pleasure to to work for this commission.
I'll say that, you know, as I was thinking about tonight and what. These commissioners have stands out in my mind, in addition to all that you've said, I and I think. That Commissioner Gill, it's really on the community engagement aspect that she had the. A lasting impact, I would say not just during her term, but her, her impact, her input. As we developed each of the engagement plans, it's going to continue, as you talked about, you know, your report last month. That will go on to council, that, you know, the questions or the groups or whatever that you're raising, you know, and we're communicating that amongst. Ourselves to be able to make sure that the next plan. Considers that and that we're doing the outreach as she has really directed on, you know. As well as all the other things that you've said, but to me, that's what really makes Commissioner Gill stand out. And Commissioner Quabula did a lot of the same thing, maybe from a different perspective. And as you know, Commissioner Quabula, it's into the detail. And so I really value that and I think his, you know, what stands out for me. And it's more recent because he was on the commission before I started working for the city. And I didn't work for the commission the whole time that I've been here, but what stands out for me is his work with the flood. Plane code and how we made some really good improvements to that to address some. Potential flood hazards because of the work that he did on making suggestions. For code amendments to address development in the flood plain and protections of that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Commissioner Quabula, we all know that you're gonna watch this. I'll say it directly to you.
One of the things that I've always appreciated is we've had some really strong people when I first came on. That showed me and led me of how to get into the details and correcting grammar. And we loved that you were the grammar king or the the, you know, just in the details of everything and appreciated that. One of the other things I really loved about you because I like Chair Salazar said, we know you're gonna watch this. Is that no matter what seat you sat in, your leadership shined all the time. No matter who was in front of us at the pulpit, giving us, or not the pulpit, but. Presenting whether it was staff or a member of the community, you always. Asked your questions in a way that was respectful to them and allowed them to feel like they were heard, but also allowed us to. Maybe think about things in a way we hadn't before, and I really, really appreciated that and similar to Commissioner Gill, I've really learned a lot from you. You're not just about planning commission, but and my role as a leader, I have learned so much from you, so thank you for always being a leader, no matter what seat you sat in.
Yeah, I think I've definitely, I think some some folks have spoken to your attention to detail, but definitely. One thing that stood out to me from the the first meeting I joined as a as a commissioner was. You're just thorough research, not only what was in the the packet, but also doing your own research and. And finding the information to make a really informed decision and putting in the time necessary to make informed decision. On every topic was something that stood out to me from the get go and and really. I think just. Being critical of each item and not seeing anything as as just like, oh, this is just gonna be. Rubber stamped through this commission, like really asking thorough questions to make sure. That we as a commission were fulfilling our responsibility of of making sure we were making informed decisions. To pass along to to council, really appreciate your, yeah, your thoroughness and your. The the critical eye that you've brought, that's made us all better and more thorough commissioners. The the critical eye that you've brought, that's made us all um better and more thorough commissioners, I think. Right, well, um Sandy, do um our outgoing commissioners get their their name?
Certainly, Sarah also has something we can supplement the.
This is a certificate of appreciation from the city of Springfield. Do you and Commissioner Quaybala has one that I will make sure gets to him. But thank you so much for your service and your time and your hard work.
Well, yeah, we appreciate you both so much. Thank you for your service to to our city and our community.
Big shoes to fill, no pressure on the.
You all help them.
Right, well, this is kind of a strange uh. Segue, but is there any other business from the planning commission?
I have some.
Yes.
Um, I mentioned a couple of, maybe a month or two ago about. The Economic Housing Summit that is put on by the Oregon Motors, the bankers and the builders. That Sandy Aguiar sent out um a while ago, and that is tomorrow, so if you haven't registered, do so. Um, I was really excited to see that our own, very own mayor is going to be one of our speakers. Out of the summit for all of Oregon, and I'm really just beaming with joy for that, and I'm really proud of that, so. If you haven't signed up, um go back and check your email and see, it's from noon to, or sorry, nine to noon tomorrow, so just a quick three hours and. Just so proud of him and Springfield, it's really awesome.
And I will note that that, I noticed that that uh um conference was posted on our page for um planning commission. Planning commission on Springfield Oregon Speaks on the calendar, so thank you for posting that. Any other business from the planning commission?
I also did one, I want to steal from the the greatness of of what's going on here, but I did actually have a report from the council on the twelfth.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I think it was skipped, but.
Okay, yeah.
So what I remember to do, uh, and so, December twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, council accepted uh November eighth, twenty twenty-two, general election proclamation for the election of the Springfield. City Mayor, uh the Springfield Utility Board Member Position Two, uh Three and Four. And the council voted yes to increase the city manager's compensation and ratified this wage increase. And lastly, uh sadly, two city council members uh left, uh Council Damon Pitts and Counselor. Uh, is it Marley, Marley, Merrily Woodrow? And um just to follow up on that, I also tuned in and Michelle Weber and Victoria Doyle took their roles off over the office on January third. In addition to re-elected Steve Mayor Sean Man Gordon. Sorry, I was speaking up earlier.
Oh, yeah, no, no, sorry, I skipped over you. And um. You're not hearing any other business from the planning commission? Um, do we have any business from the Development Public Works Department?
A few things, um first of all, you will have a quasi judicial public hearing at your next meeting, so all of um Christina's. Suggestions about that cone of silence, um to avoid those expedite contacts. Uh, this is a rezone of the church, Northwood Church property on Harvest Lane. So um they have bought property within the Markola Meadows uh development and will be building a church there and so. Putting their current church up for sale and so. Um, since it may not be a church again, looking to rezone the property. So that is for your next meeting, it will only be um regular session, no work session on February eighth, so seven o'clock. And we will hold that in the council chambers being a public hearing. As I mentioned, you um for the community engagement. Report that you had done last month, we're going to um provide that to the city council along with the minutes that you just approved. So they have a little bit more context about the discussion because I think you had some really good points. And talking about it that I'd like them to see, um so including the minutes with that report. So that they can get a summary of of the work. And I think that's it. Um Christina or Sarah, anything else?
Nothing else for me.
But I think I misheard, um I think the next commission um meeting is on Tuesday, February seventh, right?
Yeah, that's, that was my, that was my question. I I I heard Sandy say the eighth, but that.
And it's the seventh, it's it's Tuesday, February seventh.
Thank you for noticing.
All right, well, we'll see you all on um Tuesday, February seventh. Um, in the meantime, I now adjourn the planning commission regular meeting. Thank you, everyone.